Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings. My name is Barb Warwick and today, up first, the department will hear updates from is Human Resources, so the HR team would like to come to the table. To start us off, we'll have our Budget Director Peter McDevitt give us a brief overview of the department.
Thank you. The Department of Human Resources and Civil Service enables the city of Pittsburgh to meet the employment initiatives by providing skills and expertise in the areas that are imperative to successful business operation. The department is committed to developing a highly functioning workplace while respecting individual dignity, promoting and celebrating diverse population, upholding applicable laws and regulations, and molding a positive corporate culture. A quick overview, the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service is divided into the following general service areas: employment and staffing, policies and procedures, training and development, diversity and inclusion, benefits administration and absence management, wellness, employment safety and injury prevention, workers' compensation, payroll, and the Pittsburgh Partnership. A quick position summary, there is a total of 38 positions budgeted in the 2024 budget, which is an increase of one from last year. That includes two new Assistant Directors. There are some title changes from lead to senior for the HR Business Partner, Benefits Coordinator, and Payroll Coordinator. There's one additional Senior Payroll Coordinator, one less HR Liaison, College and Community Relations, one less Senior Training and Development Coordinator, one less Senior HR Specialist, an upgrade of two HR Business Partners to Senior HR Business Partners, and one additional Training and Development Coordinator. So there's a lot of swaps going on in there. So that's an overall increase of $145,000. None of those positions are union positions. A quick summary of the non-personnel changes, overall, there is an $816,929 increase in non-salary increases. However, most of this is because of all the retiree insurance, health insurance is housed in this department. Some specific changes include, and the first one is one that we've talked about a little bit, there's $7 million annually that has been placed in HR's budget as a placeholder for the anticipated costs related to the contract negotiations with FIRE, EMS, and the PJCC. So we've discussed with FIRE and EMS at the table that those union positions currently have a 0% increase while they're negotiating those contracts, but there is money placed in the 2024 budget and this is where it's housed. Also, there's retiree health insurance that has a $1 million increase. Overall, workers' comp costs are decreasing by $65,000. Employee bus pass subsidy pilot is $100,000. The bike share benefit is $17,500. There's $45,000 less budgeted in recreation services. It was childcare, but now it's budgeted under professional services. And there's $26,000 budgeted for security card readers. And for the capital budget, HR has the Neighborhood Employment Centers and Pittsburgh Employment Program. Both of those are CDBG programs. And lastly, a quick run-through for trust funds, there's the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund. Those expenditures, all costs relating to the Employment and Retention Network, or EARN, program, and the Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Initiative, including salaries, wages, and benefits per personnel, as well as office supplies, professional services, rental fees, and grant payments related to those programs. Lastly, the Senior HR Manager upgraded, oh, that's, oh, so the changes with that, there's a Senior HR Manager upgraded to Assistant Director, no other personnel or non-personnel changes within the Pittsburgh Partnership Trust Fund. That's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you. And so now we'll move on to the department. Do you have a presentation or?
I do not have a presentation.
Yeah, so go ahead and introduce yourselves and then take it away.
Paula Kellerman, Human Resources Director.
Dr. Pam Petroott, Assistant Director, Employee Compensation and Benefits.
Deidra Cochran, Assistant Director for the Pittsburgh Partnership.
Charlene Holder, Assistant Director, Secretary and Chief Examiner.
Okay, so thank you all for being here. I'll begin just by highlighting some accomplishments for the Human Resources Department for this year. One thing which we're very proud of, we successfully integrated the benefits module with our HCM-HRIS system, making it convenient for employees to complete online open benefits enrollment, access to individual pay data, and year-end statements, all in one place. We collaborated with the Bureau of Police to recruit at police academies, including offering on-location administration of the police officer recruitment exam for cadets. That is the first time we've been able to make that happen. Collaborated with the mayor's office to expand the city's partnership with the Pittsburgh Public Schools Career Technical Education Program to offer paid internships for students. And the Pittsburgh Partnership employed 914 city of Pittsburgh youth in the Summer Learn and Earn program and assisted 2,838 participants in the six partnering Neighborhood Employment So also, just a couple other things to highlight that were mentioned in the overview. The bike share program through Pogo, I know there were some questions regarding that. So as of December 1st, we had, there were 27 new registrations that occurred in November for that program for city employees. Currently, 87 active employee accounts and 247 total trips were taken in November by our city employees. And also mentioned was the bus pass pilot that we are embarking upon to make more affordable transportation for employees. And currently, we have approximately 54 employees who obtain bus passes through HR. Of course, we look for that to increase with the pilot we are doing, which will be subsidizing half of the bus pass cost. So that will take it from $97.50 to $48.75 per month.
Great, thank you very much. So we're joined by Councilmember Strasburger, is anyone on the phone?
No, it's a negative.
No, okay, great. So yeah, I'll let you take it away, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for your presentation and to all of you for being here today and the work that you do. I don't have too many questions. One's a very, I'll start with a very small question and then one sort of a macro question. The smaller question is, well, I'm really glad to see the Pogo subsidy and the bus subsidy, and I was wondering how this, bringing it down to about $48 a month compares to the average employee's payment for a parking spot. I know what I pay for my parking spot, but I don't know what other employees pay for their parking spots. Do you happen to know?
So we are actually looking to maybe change the parking fee, which of course, that would be, have to be approved by City Council as well. And should we do that, we're looking to make that $97.50. It's currently 70, it would be $97.50, which would align with what a bus pass, of course, costs monthly without subsidizing half of that.
Okay. And, that seems fair. And I also am, also, I'm glad that this is, that we're embarking on this because I know that there are some, even on some of my staff who have said, "Oh, it's not even worth applying for the, you know, the bus subsidy because it's not very much." And I think this will just help. Even those who are existing bus riders, maybe like there will be new transit riders, but there are some who have said, "It's not even worth the effort," and this will probably make it worth the effort and they can get some savings there, so that's great. And this is probably a question that, you know, a number of you can answer, but I'm really, I want to highlight again, or use this as an opportunity to once again highlight and say how proud I am that Pittsburgh has been chosen as one of five workforce hubs in the country with Partner for Work being the main agency. And I wonder how that, you think, if you're thinking about how that and maybe some funding that comes through that might impact some of the programs that we work on internally or that are CDBG funded or that, you know, have partners outside of the city, if at all?
I think I would like Deidra Cochran to speak a little bit. She works directly with Partner for Work and she and her team work with them, of course, with Learn and Earn and some of the other programs. So I don't know, Deidra, if you have any information to offer on that right now?
I haven't been invited to the meeting, so I don't know, like, really what's going on. Rick may, I mean, he's not up here, but.
Do you have anything to add? Do you have anything to add? I'd invite you up if you have anything to, I don't want to put you on the spot, but, okay, great. And I would imagine that a lot of this will come in the years to come.
Right.
Information, so, but just the general thinking of like, "Oh, what have we been dreaming to do and we haven't had the resources or the attention?" You know, I invite those kinds of.
My name is Rick Williams, I'm the Workforce Development Manager, Youth Manager for the City of Pittsburgh, Office of Mayor Gani. To your question, Councilwoman, the CTE program and Partner for Work, we're, we're meeting with labor and unions to be able to leverage possible funding coming from the Department of Labor through the workforce hub at this point. One clarification I do want to say is that there isn't any funding directly coming from the federal government at this point.
Okay, good to know.
We're just far as leveraging our position as a workforce hub for any future federal funding coming down the stretch, whether it be coming from the different agencies in the federal government, whether it be the Department of Labor, Environmental Protection, and the various agencies within the federal government right now. So there isn't any actual funding at this point, but we're leveraging funding and Partner for Work being the anchor institution will be the one that's actually far as youth programming, any workforce funding attached to any projects locally.
Okay. Good, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick.
Those are my questions, so I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Yeah, and we're also joined by Councilman Coghill, if you'd like, if you have questions for HR.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I have so much confidence and I, you know, love your department, I think you do a great job, so I don't have any questions for you, to be honest, but thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Just trying to, you know, get on our good side.
Yeah, I have to say too, I've had nothing but excellent experiences working with the HR team since I've been here, so yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for that, making it easy to work for the city. Yeah, I mean, you answered the questions that I jotted down. I guess for the, for the bus pass program, has there been any, do we know what the status is with PRT? Because I know that they, they are doing a bulk rate pilot, or they, you know, they had that happening with smaller businesses, but we were too big to sort of be part of that pilot. Has there been any word on where that pilot stands or?
The last I inquired about that was maybe a month ago, that I spoke with Budget briefly, and there were not any new updates.
No updates, okay. I mean, obviously, the, the best-case scenario, right, would be a bulk, a bulk program where the whole city could have, you know, whether we offered it cost-free or for a very, you know, modest rate, and then everybody could have bus passes, which would then encourage people to ride the bus who maybe wouldn't have normally because they didn't have a pass. Yeah, oh, I guess also, do you want to talk a little bit about the childcare? Because I see that some money has moved into professional services out of your budget, but did you want to talk a little about the childcare centers?
Sure. We placed, we worked with the mayor's office to put out a request for proposal, and we did award to an agency a couple months ago. The contract's still being prepared for that, but the intention is to offer childcare services for community meetings, some different events hosted by the mayor. So anybody who needs childcare, they obviously still are able to attend and participate and know that their children are being cared for during that time.
Okay, great. And just as far as workforce development, I don't know, would you want to come back up? Just, so I guess I, yeah, I was also at the Hazelwood Green event, and that was, it was a big event and lots of fun, and it's exciting to be chosen as a workforce hub. But just in terms of working with youth, and, you know, the Learn and Earn program is great, but I know how hard it is to get, you know, you can have all the programs and all the money and all it all set up, and then get those kids in, the programs is extremely hard. I don't know if you have any thoughts moving forward about ways to, I don't know, maybe modify our programs to give kids the flexibility maybe that they need, or challenges to, that we're facing to get kids in those, in those programs?
We've been in conversation with Partner for Work over the last year, and they have different approaches that they're looking at in regards to neighborhood-specific work sites. So they've been reaching out to different organizations within neighborhoods to be able to reach out for kids. Roughly about 50% of the Learn and Earn students between the ages of 14 and 15 are first-time experience as far as jobs are concerned. So we're looking at a tiered approach in regards to the first-year students, having more of a curriculum, work-ready type of curriculum that they'll have next year. And so part of the Learn and Earn Advisory Committee, they'll be talking about more of those things as we unveil it for 2024 at this point. So those are some of the things that are kind of on the table right now.
Okay, great. And I'd love to work, you know, perhaps we could meet sometime to talk about neighborhood-specific.
No problem.
Yeah, that'd be super. Also, so Council President has joined on the, on the call. Council President, do you have any questions?
I just want to thank you for cheering and thank HR for all their work. And Paula, we hear so many great things now that you're at home, so thank you very much all for the work you do.
Thank you. And I'll also say too, with the benefits, the HCM system is, yeah, it's a good system. I mean, I don't know what, what you had before, I just signed up for benefits for the first time, but it was very easy and, yeah.
Good, very good.
Thank you, yeah. That's our goal. Does anyone else have any last questions?
There was just one thing, and this really not pertaining to your operation at all. Somebody from your department parks in front of me on Fourth Avenue, and they seem to crowd me where I can't swing out, and I take that up with you, Director?
Sure, we can talk offline.
Okay, good enough, thank you very much. I don't want to hit the vehicle, you know?
Okay, well, if there's no further questions, can I have a motion to recess? Or do we just, should we just move on in the same one? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you all. Thank you very much.
See you guys.
Are you chairing?
I'm chairing CPR.
Oh, sure.
Unless you have a time constraint.
I mean, you want to do it?
No, not really, but I will, excuse me.
Well, you know more about OMI than I do.
Who is the next one?
Office of Municipal Investigations.
Okay, come on. You want to take it?
Okay, okay. Yeah.
The Office of Municipal Investigations, or OMI, is responsible for coordinating the receipt, analysis, and investigation of citizen complaints of alleged misconduct by employees of the city of Pittsburgh. Quick overview, OMI provides the following core services: allegations of misconduct, pre-employment investigation, and residency compliance. There is a total of eight full-time positions proposed in the 2024 budget, which is no change at all. And there's no other changes in their budget. They have nothing in capital.
Great, yeah, so I will defer to Councilwoman Strasburger, if you have any, or, sorry, do you have a presentation you want to present?
I don't necessarily have a presentation, I do have a few things that I could speak about, just so you know what we do. So thank you for including me on the process. Our staff is comprised of both civilian and sworn investigators, so the budget is only accounting for the civilian staff. We kind of have some police detectives and a sergeant on loan with us. But yeah, as was stated, we investigate complaints of misconduct, which doesn't always make us the most popular folks in the building. But we do try to treat everyone fairly, respectfully, give everyone a chance to be heard, and then provide their side of the story so that we can determine whether policy has been violated or not. In 2022, we opened 255 cases. The majority of those, 216, involved allegations against the police. The other 39 involved employees from other departments. So far in 2023, we've opened 196 cases. The numbers are, there's been a slight decrease, but it's consistent because last year, Human Resources fully took over complaints, like interpersonal complaints amongst employees and the complaints under the no-DHR policy. So our staff of 10 investigators manages that caseload. And in addition, in 2022, we only conducted 72 background investigations. 19 of those were for EMS, 53 for FIRE. That number jumped in 2023 as we began to process police again. So so far, we have conducted 224, which is three times as many as the previous year. We are wrapping up about 50 FIRE backgrounds for a class which will start in February, and are already working with HR to get a list to start the preliminary information gathering for a police class in early of 2024. We don't get a lot of input into when the city's going to be hiring, so I like to commend my staff for being able to pivot quickly because when we have to process candidates, we have to do it quickly. And so they're doing those, those tasks in addition to, you know, keeping their complaints current, and they do a very good job with that. And we've also tried to help out other departments, you know, quarterly. DPW asks us to check driver's licenses for their employees, anyone that is going to be driving a city vehicle. So every quarter, we want, we run, we run about 600 names to ensure that everyone has a valid driver's license. Only the police staff can do that, so they take that work on. It takes them about two weeks doing everything else. And then PLI jumped on that also, so we're running their licenses quarterly as well. And I know prior to that, they were sending, you know, forms out to DPW, and I'm not sure if they were getting a certified record, which costs $44 apiece, or just a regular record, which is about $10 apiece. So I mean, you're still incurring the cost of people doing that work, but we're not paying PennDOT to run those checks. We're doing it, so saving the city some money there. That's all I have.
Great, thank you. I'll go, well, Councilwoman Strasburger, you want to go first?
Thank you, yeah, thank you for being here and for all your work. I wanted to just, I have a few different numbers here. I know you, there, what I have here is eight full-time positions and five investigators, but it sounded like you have, is that five full-time and some other part-time, or do you have 10 investigators?
So we have 10 investigators, five police detectives, five civilian staff.
Got it.
And then myself, an intake coordinator, and our fiscal coordinator, so that makes up the other budget positions.
Okay, okay. Great, that's, that's helpful clarification. Is that, do you feel like you have enough investigators to do the work and to take the caseload?
I feel we're managing now, as we progress, and if we're going to be doing a lot of processing on the public safety side, we might need to consider having another investigator. I will say, the past couple years, we've kind of taken advantage of people that are on accommodated positions. So we've got, if we have police or EMS that aren't able to be out in the field doing something, we kind of put, we steal them back and we put them to work. They get a skill that they might, aren't really getting, you know, treating patients or doing whatever it is, but it helps us. They're doing some work for their departments to hire more paramedics and police officers. So that's kind of worked out, but if numbers fluctuate, I'm not sure that we'll always be able to do that.
Sure, but that's a creative use.
Yeah.
Like, of people's talents and skills.
Yeah.
You know, making sure that they're a valued part of the city's workforce, even when they're not able to be out in the same way that they were, so that's great.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that was really my, my only question, so, thanks.
Thanks, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Erin, thank you for being here. I guess I always get a little confused as to like what's, what lies under HR and what lies under you all, you know?
Yeah.
So I see here, you do pre-employment investigations, meaning background checks?
Yes.
Okay, okay, so it's done solely through your department?
Public safety is done solely through our department.
Just public safety, okay, so the recruits in the recruitment class, you do that?
Yeah, because they're a little bit more thorough, we're doing polygraph examinations, that type of thing, so we coordinate all of that for public safety, yeah.
All right, okay. And the police officers that you have, the five, so none of them are steady with you? They're just kind of?
No, they are now, yeah, so they're assigned to us for now, yeah.
So the ones that are assigned to you, that's their full-time position?
Yes.
They don't switch them in or out or anything?
Correct, yeah. So operationally, they report to me on a daily basis, but of course, they still have a chain of command back to the chief.
And any investigations from civilians goes to you about misconduct, whether it be animal rescue, police firefighter?
Correct. And if a department has something that's maybe not, maybe they heard of something, they might refer it to us, or police supervisors might review a report and maybe not have all the full video, so they're, they'll ask us to look into that as well.
Got it. And then is there a certain time when you're investigating something and you turn it over to HR, or does it go, say, for instance, if it turns into a lawsuit, then you're, you're out, right? Meaning if somebody calls and has a complaint about misconduct of a police officer and they say, and they file suit against the city of Pittsburgh, do you also stay on that?
No, we'll still do the investigation because we're investigating the policy aspect of it. Yeah, because then a lot of times, the law department will later ask for our investigative materials because obviously, we're collecting those closer in time, and then use our materials to, in the lawsuit later.
Yeah, so your piece of it is used in that court proceeding, if there is one.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, good. That's really it for me, that's, that's all I have. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thanks. Is Madam President?
Still online.
Do you have any questions?
No, thank you, I just want to thank you, Erin, for the job that you do in such a professional way, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, I guess I do, I'm, yeah, I don't have any questions pertaining to, to the budget at all, seems pretty clear. I'm a little curious about how your office works together with the Citizen Police Review Board, which will be next, I'm just kind of curious about that.
There is some information sharing because they do have subpoena power and document requests that they will send to us, but per city code, like if someone files a complaint with us, a citizen, then we send it over to them, so that it is actually being looked at by both agencies. The CPRB will also take in a complaint, and as long as the complainant isn't opposed to sending it to us, because some people do not like police officers, you know, like looking at their complaint, they will send it to us as well. So there is.
Some collaboration.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, I don't think I have any other questions. Thanks for coming and, yeah, thanks for all your work.
Thank you.
Erin.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. Unless you want to take this one too, you're kind of on a roll.
No, I'm good. Are they here? Oh, she's online, okay.
Is she on?
Yes, the Executive Director, Elizabeth Pittinger, is joining us on Zoom, thank you, Director.
Thank you.
You going to do your spiel?
I mean, you want to introduce it?
Hello, welcome to Pittsburgh City Council Budget Hearings, I'm Anthony Coghill, I chair the Public Safety. For this hearing, we will be hearing updates from Citizen's Police Review Board. First, I'd like to invite those from CPRB to join us at the table, which we don't have. I see Ms. Pittinger is online, which is fine. I'll ask our Budget Director, Peter McDevitt, give a brief overview of the board.
Thank you, Councilman. The Independent Citizen Police Review Board promotes responsible citizenship and respectable law enforcement through mutually, mutual accountability. The broad mandate of this Citizen Police Review Board is to provide independent review of the conduct of the Pittsburgh Bureau of Police. To accomplish this assignment, the Board will thoroughly investigate specific allegations of misconduct, hold public hearings to examine such allegations, evaluate current police procedures, and promote safe, professional, and effective law enforcement practices through public education on rights, responsibilities, and police authority, and make recommendations to the mayor and the chief of police regarding police policies and procedures. A board comprised of seven members appointed by the mayor and city council presides over the work of the staff and determines all final dispositions of cases. The Board conducts public hearings and renders findings and recommendations to the chief of police and mayor as related to the matter or complaint under review. A quick overview, the CPRB is focused on the following: investigation and complaint disposition, community education, board and staff development, and administrative. There are eight full-time positions proposed in the 2024 budget, which is There are eight full-time positions proposed in the 2024 budget, which is no change from 2023. A quick summary of non-personnel changes, there was $15,722 added to non-personnel items that included $15,000 added for language access services and $722 increase for rent space. They do not have any capital or trust funds. That's all I have.
Ms. Pittinger, hello, and it's good to see you again. Do you have anything you want to discuss or presentation you want to make before we get into questions?
Well, thank you, Councilman, and I appreciate your accommodation of me this afternoon. The board has been fairly busy and in a bit of a reorganization state this year. We've had four of our members' terms have expired, so we're welcoming new members onto the board for terms to go into 2025 and 2027. We've also had some staff changes, which I have to extend our appreciation to council for authorizing last for, for this current year. The addition of an administrative assistant, it has been a tremendous help and support for the office work that we do have to do, as well as for our outreach. And we were able to deploy a community liaison. And that is actually a position that was assumed by one of our veteran investigators. She has been out and about throughout the community, throughout the city, and serving as an advocate for the community by learning what the local neighborhood issues may be, bringing that back and advising the board as to what needs she perceives would be helpful in terms of policing. What we have found is a significant increase in complaints about parking and parking enforcement. And that has actually kept us very busy the last couple of months, which is unusual. But it, because of our community liaison, we're able to facilitate exchanges between different departments now. And the police who are being accused of not enforcing parking or having relationships that are not very positive in the neighborhoods because of parking, we're able to run some interference there, which has helped, I think, in terms of improving the relationship between the officers in a particular neighborhood, the zone, and their residents. And that's, that's purely because we're able to use that position now that council allocated for last year, and we appreciate that very much. This year, year-to-date, we've received 217 complaints. Last year, we finalized at 232 complaints, and the year before, 227 complaints. So we've come to this, this 220 sum as being what appears to be a pattern that's repeating itself over the last couple of years. And that speaks highly, I think, to the changes that we've seen in the Bureau of Police in a positive way. The Bureau is obviously, as you all know, in a bit of a turmoil in terms of the changes. Chief Scarrato's only been there for five months, you know, and they're, they're undergoing a lot of change and also organizationally under a lot of stress. But in spite of that, we are not seeing a big increase in public dissatisfaction. At least, people are not coming and telling us about that. The number of complaints we look at by zone gives us the opportunity to focus on what's happening in particular zones. And in this particular, 2023, Zone 3 has been the zone which, which has brought the highest number of complaints. And that makes sense when you look at the hospitality zone down in Carson Street. Ordinarily, though, Zone 3 has not been the number one. That's typically been Zone, Zone 1. So we, we have an opportunity now to get a better handle on what the local issues are with our community liaison position. It's an extraordinarily invaluable position we've been able to add and to fulfill some of our community advocacy work that we've dreamed about over the years. It's now come to fruition. We've also added a new investigator. That investigator will be starting, I believe, December 18th, in two weeks, I believe, is the start date for that individual. So we've undergone some, some changes, some general organizational reorganizing, but it's been very, very positive. The greatest number of complaints that we receive continues to be around personal demeanor, rude and discourteous conduct exhibited by our police officers. We have not had any egregious issues come forward. The board has not had to hold a public hearing in some time. And also just for background, if there is a highly controversial or highly visible incident that raises public concern, we have to step back until such time as any potential or any criminal inquiry has been disposed of finally, particularly if you consider the case of Mr. Rogers. We are still on hold because the district attorney has not announced a final disposition with regard to criminal culpability in that particular incident. So we are restrained to some extent. It's, it's a reasonable restraint. You don't want your independent agency getting into the middle of a, an investigation into a serious matter and obstructing or interfering with it. So those kinds of things, if you wonder why we're not doing something, it's typically because we, we are otherwise restrained by law from engaging in an active investigation. Our relationship with OMI, as Erin said, we have an exchange of information that goes back and forth. We are empowered with the use of the subpoena for certain documents that otherwise are not readily available. We do use that, we exercise that with OMI, and, and they've been very cooperative. We have a good working relationship with them and a great deal of admiration for the, the quality of work produced by OMI. They do, they do a very good job for the city. Transparency is a big, big word, a descriptive. We still have some trouble obtaining information from the city. Last year, we did seek to acquire the training curriculum, the training system for newly promoted supervisors. You'll recall, we had some incidents that really put out the question as to what, what level of super provision was available on scene? And then how well-prepared and capable were the supervisors that were on scene in incidents that may have not turned out well? So we thought we should look at that, but we, we were unable to obtain that material. And when Chief Scarrato came on board, though, he did provide us with his agenda for training for those supervisors. So we, we, we are looking at, at different matters that are a little bit more extensive than just someone filing a complaint and what were the circumstances and facts of a particular complaint. We do reach out into those policy matters that affect the general policing and the perception of policing in the city of Pittsburgh. I know that some of you have concerns about the access, excuse me, to body worn camera video. That access is controlled by state statute. It is not something locally controlled beyond a decision by the local police agency to maintain control over the disposition or the disclosure of police body worn camera video, or they may choose to have an agreement with the local district attorney, who in turn decides when things, when body cam video can be disclosed. There is, under the state law, a requirement that there be an agreement between, in our, in our situation, the city and the district attorney, because the district attorney controls access to the city's body worn camera video by choice of the city. And we have requested a copy of that agreement, and we thus far have not yet received it. So there are things like that that are obstacles, that if we can overcome them, then, then we're able to go forward with, with forming a conclusion and advising anybody who's interested in the matter. But while we have to struggle to get some of that information, that still remains a problem and can be very frustrating. I think, looking forward to next year, we are probably going to engage with, in another performance audit of the Bureau of Police with the city controller's office. You will recall in 2020, there was a referendum amendment to the Home Rule Charter, and one of the obligations placed upon the board was to partner with the city controller and conduct those performance audits. The last one, and the first one and the last one, was issued in May of 2022. But we do anticipate conducting another one in 2024. I think, generally speaking, that's, that's, that's it for me, Mr. Chairman. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Thank you, Ms. Pittinger. And, yeah, we'll start right away with Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Ms. Pittinger. We appreciate your work and always your, you know, wealth of knowledge on these topics. And I'll just pick up on the last thing that you mentioned, the expected audit in concert with the controller's office in 2024, which is great to see. And I think, you know, frequent audits are always helpful for, for us to be able to understand where we, you know, stand, especially with changes happening within the Bureau, as you mentioned. Are there any particular recommendations from the last audit that you'll be expecting to scrutinize or to see changes made in the time since the last audit for next year that you would like to share with us or feel like that you're at liberty to share with us?
We're doing a look back now to establish what priorities we should include in the upcoming or the, the next performance audit that we conduct. Traffic stops was a, a big issue then. Council had also adopted the fair and equitable enforcement of traffic laws ordinance, the traffic stop ordinance, which has been a controversial issue here. And the, the marijuana arrest was a big issue in that last audit. Staffing, I mean, there are a number of things that councilwoman, and we're doing that look back right now to determine what we, we should be focusing on and incorporating into this next audit. I, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with identifying anything other than those two particular issues right now.
That's, that's understandable, and it makes sense.
And the staffing issue, though, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but the staffing issue is a big issue now, even in terms of Chief Scarrato's effort to reorganize the Bureau. It's a topic of arbitration, I believe, but there's, there's a major change in, in the modeling that they, they intend to use, the change in shifts, going back to 10-hour shifts, which I understand the membership of the FOP really wanted. They wanted to return to a 10-hour shift. But we're faced with a shortage of officers, and 10-hour shifts further reduces your ability to cover hours that you need throughout the week. So there's, there's, there's that. And then there's the schedule change of shifts and the change of the overnight protection, the overnight shifts, instead of being zone by zone. So there are a lot of changes in there that we understand are on hold right now. But, but Chief Scarrato is actually coming to the board's meeting tonight. It will be on Zoom. If anyone's interested, the link is available at our website and our Facebook page, cprbpgh.org. It's also livestreamed on YouTube, again, same channel, cprbpgh. And he's going to discuss those things. There's some dissatisfaction in, in the rank and file, from what I hear, that we expect him to address tonight, which is related to the timing of the shifts, that officers feel that they, their, their quality of, of personal life is going to be negatively influenced by the timing of the 10-hour shifts. So there's more to learn about that. But again, when we looked at it back in the performance audit, to move it into this next audit, it's going to, it's going to look differently than it did two years ago.
Thank you. Well, we'll await that and look forward to seeing it. My next question is about data, and I know that in the past, we've heard that, you know, the, there are benefits and drawbacks to every city, municipality, or, or region having its own police department, really a lot, you know, in large part, its own rules and ways of, like, even when it comes to present, collecting and presenting data, it might be different here than it is in a, in a city across the state. To the extent that you're aware, is there any consistency in the way that, you know, Pittsburgh collects and presents data for us to compare, actually using it like an apples-to-apples comparison with other cities across Pennsylvania? Or is it just different everywhere and it's like impossible to even compare how we're doing to, to similar-sized cities in Pennsylvania or elsewhere?
I think the influences on that data are very localized. And so you have a lot of, you have influences there that are distinctly different. The, the collection of data by the state police and the FBI, et cetera, the uniform prime reporting system and that sort of thing, that attempts to, to measure apple to apple more so than, than anything else, it's just purely numbers. That can give you an indication, but it gives you an indication probably more so of the local, generalized local conditions of a community than, in particular, the police. What would tell us a lot more in terms of police performance would be the collection of conviction data, which of, of course, would have to be adjusted based on whatever deals the district attorney's office might make or defense attorney might, might consider. But for performance of individuals, officers, we would love to be able to track conviction rates. How many arrests did you make? And how many, and, and what was the outcome of all of those arrests as an indicator? That doesn't, that's not collected anywhere, but it would probably be a more accurate reflection on an officer's performance than anything else. But the general influence of the community at large, the, the local data is probably the most valuable, without trying to make comparisons. Use the other databases like the UCR or FBI, the incident reporting system, that sort of thing. I, I don't, you know, there are. There was a program, and this goes back to individual officer performance called Trulio, that we had the speaker come last year and give a presentation, the, one of the co-founders. And it was a system based on measuring officers through their voice, through, through their interactions with people, their performance levels, their competence, their confidence, their satisfaction with an encounter based on that verbal engagement. And that program, I believe there is a hybrid of it or some, some copy, sort of copy, a mutation of that program, now available through Axon. And I think the city, the city piloted something that, with Axon, that was intended to measure similar characteristics of an officer's performance and engagement with civilians. And that's, that's, that's a huge, potentially huge indicator of the efficacy of our training and how we're producing the professionalism within the officers, and when they're out on the street, can they de-escalate situations and that sort of thing. And those, I think, would probably have an indirect but a very valuable influence on the general data collection, but it would be a huge indicator for internal personnel assessment. Now, this is a little bit of a deviation from your question, Councilwoman, but it, it, I know that the current leadership in the Bureau did have an interest in, in the Trulio and programs like that, that came from a corporate-based customer service ideology. It would be, if they asked for it, I would encourage you to consider giving them the, the resources necessary to acquire a system like that.
Thank you. That was hugely helpful, so I appreciate your longer answer there with all the, all your thoughts and with all the details. That's the extent of my question. So thank you, Ms. Pittinger. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And go to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick.
Okay, thank you. Yes, thank you, Director, for being here and for always being so open to sitting with council members and talking through these important issues. And also being here for our residents, for, you know, supporting them when they, when they encounter difficulties with, with the Bureau of Police. I guess my first question is, if, to, to the extent that you're comfortable responding, how, how is the cooperation with, with the Bureau? You said that, that your working relationship with OMI is positive. Would you say the same for your relationship, working relationship with the Bureau, whether that be with the FOP or the Bureau itself?
Generally, yes, I would, Councilwoman. It's taken a number of years for us to establish a working relationship that's It's taken a number of years for us to establish a working relationship that's, that's forthright, honest. The union, you know, typically is, is perceived as being anti-CPRB. I think that has evolved over the years. I think the union leadership right now recognizes that this kind of oversight, this kind of extra, extra agency kind of monitoring is something that is just now a part of the law enforcement profession. I think our board over the years has demonstrated a credibility, that it has integrity, that it is not going to adopt a populist approach to dealing with complaints or looking at particular incidents or dealing with policy matters. The FOP, we have designated now working directly with their counsel, with their, their officers' attorneys. Oftentimes, an officer would choose to discuss with us personally whatever incident we're investigating or looking into. And other officers prefer that we conduct our, our investigation through their attorney, in which case we present questions and then through the attorney, we get the answers back. And we were able to do that now without the kind of resistance that we had in the past. With the general administration of the Bureau of Police, I think that too is cordial. You know, we, we, both the board, staff, myself and chief and, and the police leadership, we recognize we have jobs to do and we have a professional respect for each other. There is information, of course, that they don't want to give up. And if we absolutely have to have it, we find workarounds or we will utilize a subpoena. We are not hesitant for one second to go to court to enforce a subpoena. The board has demonstrated that over the years. And we, we feel that we've established a working relationship and a relationship that's on, on sound foundation. We know what the, what the parameters are. We know what the people expected of us in, in the charter, the original, as well as the, the 2020 amendment. We know what counsel, through your adoption of ordinances and where you've tweaked some things, and, and we, we understand that, like policy review, that we review the police policies before there, any modification or a revision is implemented, whatever you do. We know what those parameters are and we work within that, as does the Bureau of Police. So we've established that and I can say in, in good conscience, I really do believe that we have a very professional, productive relationship. And, you know, it, it, it's based on the, the record of our boards and the board's legacy through the years has passed on that, that kind of expectation, that the work we do as staff will be professional, it will be fair, it will be, it, it will not be slipshod, it will be comprehensive. And we give them that information so that they can establish the facts and they can decide what to do with a particular incident. So it's, it's 25 years, 27 years, I guess, 26 years that the board has been doing what they do. And I, I, I feel very confident right now that the relationship between the Bureau and the board is, is, is productive and positive.
Good. Great. That's good to hear. I'm also curious, well, perhaps as it will relate to your, your upcoming performance audit, but even, even in future audits down the road. So, you know, when we're moving into this somewhat new co-response model, right, with social workers, et cetera, working together, with the Office of Community Health and Safety, et cetera, and I know this is, there's not necessarily an answer to this, but, you know, in what you do, it's of course analyze, you know, taking a look at the negative feedback. But if, if there were a way to kind of incorporate positive feedback as well so that we could maybe measure the improvements, not necessarily by the absence of negative comments, but maybe by also the presence of positive comments from, from the public. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that. I don't know if that would just double your work over time or that's a different, a different board.
It's always hard, you, you can't quantify that, which you can't grab. If it's not tangible, you just can't quantify it. And, and you would have to assume that, that the fewer negative reactions to police must mean that something positive is happening. I don't know how we measure that, except that, something the chief will address tonight at our meeting too, is the use of these community service aids that they have budgeted for 12 in, in the 2024 proposed budget. How they're going to interact with the public and what their role is going to be, will that have an influence and will the Office of Community Health and Safety have an influence on the number of mental health calls or, you know, the service, the provision of the appropriate service for the call? And that, I guess, will have to be developed. But I, I, I have heard very positive comments from community as well as police officers that as far as our work goes, they feel confident that we're fair. And, and that's huge. We do hear concerns from the community at large related to that which has given rise to the, the co-response program about not needing a cop at the scene because the person was just in a, in a mouth and an emotional crisis. That's why we all, you know, strive to, to create an environment where individuals' needs are being met appropriately, not just being removed for the convenience and the comfort of other people around. So with the cooperation of, with, with Health and Human Services, with our, with, with, actually Director Dalton used to be a board member here, and she's quite familiar with, with the, the community demand or alternative responses. So I think the positive relationship there with Office of Community Health and Safety will have a very good impact on the demand of our officers who are not competent, trained or interested in providing mental health, emotional support services, which is the reality, not everybody is so inclined. But that we have a backup now for the individual in crisis as well as the officers. And that we should see some things settle down and maybe we can extract data from that. Office of Community Health and Safety may be, may be the ones to look to for that.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for all your work and, yeah, I look forward to continuing to work together in the coming years.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick. Ms. Pittenger, you know, I, I know you've been at this for many years now. And I think I asked you this last year. Are you the only executive director of CPRB? Or, I know you go back to like 1998, the, the formation of it. Was there somebody before you? I can't remember.
There was. There, the, the board was created, as you'll recall, in 1997, in, in the May primary. And the board was impaneled and they hired staff in, in the spring of 1998, including an individual who was their first executive director. She left nine months later and I came in as acting to, to just cover until they decided what they wanted to do with permanent appointment. And then I stayed. So I've been here since January of 1999.
Yeah. So you've been at the helm for close to 23, 24 years now.
Sure.
Well, I think that experience probably bodes well for, for the CPRB. I thank you for your years of service. I, I wanted to ask you, like, what triggers an investigation for CPRB? You know, is it just at your discretion? Is it what you see in, in the press? Or how do you decide to take up issue?
If, if an individual, they have an encounter with a police officer and they're not satisfied, they can alert us to that. They call, they file a complaint with their intention of filing a sworn statement of complaint. When that sworn statement of complaint comes in, it's assigned to an investigator and the investigating begins. If there is an incident for which there is a public interest, but there's no individual complainant that comes forward, the board has directed me to open an inquiry. We call them executive director inquiries. And I open that, I issue, I, I put in the record a sworn statement and it's assigned to an investigator. Some of those high-profile instances that you've seen, Councilman, we have opened an inquiry and if someone comes forward then and also files a sworn complaint, or even if they've given us a statement that has, is a sworn verbal statement, we will accept that and make them the primary complainant because they're involved in the incident. But that's, that's generally how it goes. They have six months to file the intention with us, a pending complaint, after the incident has to be notified. We have to be notified within six months. And then they have six months thereafter to file a sworn statement. We do provide notice to them when those, those benchmarks come along, such as you have 60 days left. If you want to go forward, you have to come now or, or ever hold your peace. We do receive complaints, some jail complaints, people who are incarcerated, who have just learned about the board. If we receive something that seems to have merit in, in the sense of, yeah, something does look askew here, I will open an inquiry, we'll check it out preliminarily, and if there seems to be cause there, we will go forward and the board, that's the board, been the board's policy, so that anything that happens, that it, it is looked at, if it has a public interest attached to it.
Yep. Understood. So if somebody files a formal complaint, that triggers it automatically? If you feel, you know, it should be looked into, but nobody has filed that formal complaint, you do an inquiry and you can trigger it yourself, correct?
That's correct. And all dispositions are the decision of our board and our staff. We don't make any final disposition decisions. The board receives a complaint, it, it looks at the preliminary inquiry that was conducted by investigator, and if there's cause to go forward, they will order a full investigation. That full investigation then is reported back to the board at the following board meeting. And if they feel that they have enough information to dispose of the complaint, that, you know, it's unfounded, it's unsubstantiated, unsustainable, or it's out of jurisdiction, if it got through an administrative review, then they can dispose of it, they can close the case. If they feel there's more information necessary, then they will extend that investigation by 30 days essentially till their next board meeting. And then they will make a decision whether to go forward with, by suspending it or to go forward with, say, a public hearing or to dispose of it at that time. So all those decisions, all those final terminal decisions are made by our board, not by an administrative staff person.
Absolutely. And, you know, Councilwoman Warwick asked a very important question, and you don't need to elaborate on it, you answered the question, but as far as the relationship goes with the administration, the new chief, and even the lodge, seems to be at an all-time positive for you, it seems, if I read between the lines, is your answer? Compared to past?
I think it's respectful.
Yeah. Good. Good. Okay. We'll take respectful. That beats the alternative. You know, you said that the number one complaint is traffic stops as to citizens' complaints about police officers. I guess when that happens, you, you know, who, who is the protection for the police officer? Meaning, you know, I know that the union's going to look after that police officer, but if you get a complaint about somebody being belligerent or, you know, misbehaving at a traffic stop on a police officer, which I've seen it many, many, many a times, I know it happens. So, so, you know, what they say at that scene can be subject to investigation, is that right? Without their, with or without their union protections on that? Or I don't understand, I guess, what, when you get those complaints, what happens is what I'm asking, I guess, if it's just verbal?
We have a, where the officer has been mistreated by the person they've stopped?
No, I'm speaking of a person being mistreated by an officer. I would thought, I thought that would be the, the most, the majority of the complaint there, no?
And, and that rude and discourteous kind of complaint happening in a traffic stop, one of the things that, I don't know how we manage this, I mean, we, we've gone into schools, we've talked to high schoolers, we've talked to elementary kids, but the, the general level of civility that is encountered by both sides in these, these things can escalate just like that. But if there's a situation where an individual complains that the officer, officer was speaking to the rudely or whatever it may be, we'll investigate that. But we will also have a moment with the individual complaining, with that complainant, to talk about how they conduct themselves with that officer. Because there's, there's this notion, this, this, this command and control language, it can sound harsh, it can sound force, it can sound rude, but it's actually, it's, they're taught to speak in a rather matter-of-fact way, especially as things begin to escalate, they have to assert more authority, and you hear that in their voices, the officer's voices. We respect that, we understand that. If we can determine that it was outside of that kind of conduct, it was outside of that purpose, that the officer was just being a jerk, we will reach out to that officer and we'll say why we, you know, we'll pursue it that way. And, and if it turns out that it was just managing that traffic stop and there wasn't anything that, that takes us to the next level, like there was not some pejorative use, there wasn't swearing at the individual, it's just perhaps the, the officer's demeanor that was a little bit more stodgy than others, we'll explain that to the, the complainant. Those kinds of complaints, Councilman, we tend, we won't go to a full public hearing unless perhaps there was some kind of racial bias involved or something that was really extreme. But because there are so numerous, we will take them as a class and we will put, we'll keep a list of individuals who were in that circumstance. And then the board will conduct what they call a rude and discourteous hearing, which is essentially the gathering of complaints that are unbecoming or could be construed as unbecoming, definitely left the civilian feeling dissatisfied with the engagement, but didn't rise to the level of the officer being involved in misconduct or, so they'll hear all of those people at one time.
Yep.
And then if there's reason to issue a suggestion, recommendation to the board or from the board to the chief, the, the board will do that.
Right.
But that's how we handle those, those complacents are so numerous, but they are just really, they seem to be more of a, of a personality, kind of a, a situation that's, that doesn't rise to the level of misconduct.
Right.
Now, the officers involved in those, their attorney is always notified that we're looking into an incident that happened. And in those cases, more often than not, the officers will personally get back to us and tell us why whatever happened, happened. And that's usually enough, enough to resolve the case, the complaint. We'll go back and explain it to the complainant and that's all we can do. But we're not going to take an officer and, you know, put them out there in a public hearing and, and excoriate them for an encounter that we really have no proof of.
Right.
Unless it was captured on body worn.
Well, that, that was my next.
Video and we're able to get it.
Yeah. That was my next question. If such an incident occurred and you felt it needed to be further looked into, you're just judging on what the, the motorist versus the police officer are saying to each other, are you privy to the body cam and the audio as to, you know, at the scene in order to determine? Or you're just going by, here's the word, the word of the officer and the motorist?
The complaint that we're, we're talking about, it really is, it's a credibility, he said, he said kind of a situation. The body worn camera video is critically important to those instances. We of recently have not been able to view or listen to any audio from the body worn videos, the cam, the, the produced by the video, the body warns. We do see vehicle camera video, we can hear some of that. But that right now is a contemporary issue where we've got to struggle with between city administration, Bureau of Police, and the district attorney's office. It, it is a change. If, if the body worn camera video is part of a criminal investigation, it is protected by state statute for governing Criminal History Record Information Act in addition to the body worn camera statute. Was it classified as investigative material? Once it's classified as investigative material, then nobody can see it except the law enforcement person, the designated law enforcement agency personnel. That's the state level. The run-of-the-mill routine body worn camera information, we're still struggling with that to try to get a better way. What we've done in the past is we would ask a, um, senior supervisor in the Bureau of Police, if, if we can't come over and see it, would you please watch it? We will ask you questions as you're watching it. And then they would give us answers to what they, what they, they observed on the video or heard on the video. And that way we would extract the information from the video without firsthand observation ourselves. But we are right now at, at, at a point where we have to resolve this body worn, um, video for instances other than a criminal investigation. And it, as I said, we've asked for a copy of the agreement with the district attorney through the city, um, so that we better understand what the parameters of their relationship, their, their engagement with the, or control, the district attorney's control of the body worn video. How far does that go to city of Pittsburgh police body worn video?
Yep, understood.
I know, that sounds confusing and it's frustrating.
No, no, I mean, yeah, it sounds like you have to fight-
But it is what it is.
Sounds like you have to fight to see it or, you know, inquire. Uh, I guess it's just not readily available for you on the asking of any particular situation, I guess.
It is not because it's, it's, it's-
Right.
-under the umbrella of the state statute.
Got it, got it, understood.
And, and where we sought to obtain it, it, we received a response from the district attorney's office that was going to cost us $600 if we wanted a copy of this video that was not protected under CRIA, under the Criminal History Record Information Act.
Got it.
So this, that's, you know, that's a current issue, it's a current obstacle for us, but we do have workarounds and, um, we want to get its, we want to get it straightened out, but we've just embarked on that effort.
Yep, understood. So the, the, the last thing I have for you is land and building under our property services. I have 73, or $70,730, is that the rent? Is that the rent?
Yes.
Okay. I remember approving a new lease just a year or two ago. How big a space is that? That's just, is that one floor? And what, how big a space are we paying for?
We have two floors.
Two floors.
I don't recall the square footage right now. It's located up, um, just beyond Diamond, where Diamond Street shoots off of Fifth Avenue, so that it's on the edge of Uptown and is on the other edge of Downtown, because of its proximity to Downtown, um, to the office, to City County Building, et cetera, and convenience for people trying to get to us.
Yep, yep.
We've been there since the beginning.
Oh, wow. So you're happy with the-
Board went there in March.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
You're hap, you're happy with the space then?
We're okay with it, we're okay with it now. Um, that's not to say in a few years that, that the staff may want to move, the board may want to move.
Right.
But right now we are locked into a lease and we're satisfied, we're okay.
Okay, great, great. Well, again, Ms. Pinder, thank you for your years of service. I do feel like, you know, sometimes you get a bad rap and, you know, I, I do feel though, overall, you've been fair and, um, you know, to the police officers and the citizens and everybody through and through. So you're a steady hand there. Uh, I'm happy that, that you're at the helm and I hope you are for many years to come. So, uh, thank you again for your services and I want to turn it back to my colleagues if you have anything to, no? Okay. So anybody online? We're good to go?
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, well, that's it. Ms. Pinder, thank you again and we'll see you same time, same place next year, I guess, right?
Oh, God willing, thank you. And again, thank you for your accommodation today, Councilman.
No problem, no problem. Motion to recess.
Motion to recess.